We'll call the Boone County Council meeting to order. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or changes to the agenda? All right, for now, we'll go to the approval of the August thirteenth minutes. Do we have a motion? Have any motion to have approved? It's been properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the August thirteenth minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll start with the new business. Sheriff Tony Harris has an ordinance for us to look at of the commissary. Right off the bat.
And I will add before Tony starts that this is supposed to have been a requirement from previous sheriffs.
So, like Debbie said, it is an ordinance. Where I got this ordinance is, did everybody get a copy of it? I didn't, we didn't just come up with this ordinance. Sheriff Dan Aaron of Adams County actually asked us to, he's the Adams County Sheriff, he's the second term, he's currently the I.S.A. President. One thing you're seeing in a couple different counties across the state is the sheriff's going to be in charge of the commissary. Well, I want to stay as far away from that as I can, right? You're seeing a sheriff that's getting about fifteen years, so what they're at right now. So, all I'm trying to do is be open and transparent with you guys. You have got those every half so far, and I want to continue to do that. And it not just sets the standard for me, it sets the standard for the next sheriff and the next council that we've already got something in place that... There's no question on making sure that you guys get those reports on the commissary. Aaron's our liaison, I spoke to him in person about it, I spoke to a couple other people in person about it, but at the same time, we do a lot of training out of, you'll see that in there. You'll see, a couple years ago, when Sheriff Wilson had me, or asked me to do, go ahead and do the budget because I was doing the incoming sheriff, I asked for firearms. You guys didn't have that money, so it's part of it, I took out a commissary. We're not doing anything out of the ordinary with the commissary. We'll be able to receive it, we'll go over, we'll make sure that we're doing the right things with commissary two on two that I was at. Then, Sheriff Associate, last week, I'm on the work address there. Sheriffs were asking if CPAs were looking at the commissary because it's a hot topic with sheriffs right now. I raised my hand and said that we have done that two years ago, we're getting ready to do it every two years. So, sheriffs are really starting to take a look at it, they asked me into CPA plus, so we're doing things in good kind that other counties are doing already. And it's just ideas that we're coming up with to make sure we're safeguarding and taking care of commissary, making sure that we're doing the right things with commissary as well.
All, open your questions.
I just had a quick question on the detail of the fund. KEIF commissions, I just didn't know what KEIF commissions was.
Uh, KEIF commission is our phones, that's our phone vendor, so when they make phone calls, and some of that, the FCPA, they're getting ready to lower the standards on that too through the feds as far as how much the sheriffs can take off that. We don't gouge them by state standards or whatever sheriffs in the state are doing, so we just gotta be conscious of that and through the federal government, they can take that and watch the weight, how much you charge an inmate for a phone call, so that's, that's what comes.
So, in six months, we had a hundred and forty thousand-ish between the inmate telephone and those commissions? So, that's, that's a big part of?
That is a big part, that is a big part. If they hit us with that share, it's gonna, it's gonna go down substantially, but I mean, I keep you guys posted on that.
This is helpful, no, great.
Right now, just in the middle of it, we're trying to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Good information. I said, good information.
Yeah, no, thanks for putting this together, I appreciate it. Have we get this twice a year?
Yeah, you get it twice a year. You get it the first half of the year, and then you get it in the middle of the year, it's right. If you look on there, it'll say, the sheriff there after providing that order, the work regarding commissary fund, the Boone County Council for each semi-annual period, the Boone County Council within sixty days of the end of each such reporting period. The second page.
If we don't have any focus in any filing that we do with SBOA?
No, they just have to provide it to them. Uh, SBOA does audit the commissary file.
Okay.
And it has, it just has to match what Brittany provides to us and then...
I put it gateway, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yep.
We did our audit, we did our audit this year.
It was a gateway?
It's considered a supplemental account, so they, since they hold the money and they report it themselves, then they have to report it to gateway. It's part of our yearly audit.
Oh, okay. I think it would go a gateway, but... Right, okay. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
So, do we have a motion to approve the ordinance, uh, two thousand and twenty-four dash three?
So moved.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four dash three. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Stop, we did something wrong.
Just real quick, is this the first reading of this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so, you can pass on, on first reading, suspending the rules into the later, or you can just treat this as first reading and pass it out as first reading to consider for passage. Just proceed with this.
So, we can't approve it today?
Yeah, we can, we can suspend the rules to do that if the council so desires.
So, I move that we suspend the rules.
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded to suspend the rules to pass this ordinance on first reading. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, is that cleared up, Jewel?
Now we need to, now we need to vote on it.
Now we need to vote on it again? Yes, is there, is there a motion to approve the ordinance now that we suspended the rules to do it?
So moved.
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion to approve the ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four dash three? If not, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, appreciate it. The next discussion is gonna be on the levy appeal, and this is something that we did last year, and Debbie and I spoke about it, so we're, we're looking at doing the levy appeal this year again. So, do you have any other comments?
Uh, we just have to have it submitted by October nineteenth. They do, the state, the DLGF does require a lot of reports to show that we are in the above levy appeal. There's also a questionnaire that they require that pretty much spells out why we think we need the money and what we would use it for. So, we're in the process of trying to get some fluff added to those questions. Surely, at the next adoption meeting, we will have probably more information that I can give to you to know what's being submitted for from September, I guess due to the nineteenth of October.
Thank you, Debbie, any questions on that?
I'll reach out to you, help me out.
Yeah, I'll ask her to kinda help Board Smith then, so that we can get something together with the chair.
I've got an attorney that writes a lot.
Not an attorney on this board.
Well, of course you're not. Technology's on this board.
Thank you. Let's move on to the, the ARB funds, for the two trucks. This is something that we asked, the commissioners, Aaron asked, Donnie, if this would be possible. So, they did approve it yesterday at their meeting to use these ARB funds for these two vehicles, so...
Yeah, I just wanna take a minute to thank Commissioner Lawson, we had a conversation about this. So, this came up in our last budget workshop, and we worked to get this approved so we wouldn't have to take it out of CC, I think it was originally CCD. So, he found a way to get this out of the ARB fund, so thanks Commissioner Lawson for helping us to get these two approved. I think there's one just small administrative thing we need to take care of on...
I had asked Carol, who originally got the two quotes, I don't know, I think she's... On the quotes that she received back in May or June, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Kenny, I don't know. It said, could increase the price? So, I have asked her to get a firm quote since it's been approved. I'm hoping those numbers won't change. One of the vehicles is forty-eight thousand, one-one-eight. The other one is fifty-two, four-eighty-four.
So, we're just trying to lock in the...
I'm just trying to lock in a firm price so that I need those numbers for ARP, but hopefully it won't change a whole lot.
We're, actually, we're open up for some other bids, because those did not have the government to discount in it.
Ah, okay.
So, I would think will be rebid.
Okay, well, great, okay.
Hopefully, it'll be less than what you see there.
We don't want to approve that appropriation.
Thank you.
All right, you wanna, should we table this until October? All right, I move that we table the ARP appropriations for area plan until October meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, table this discussion until the October meeting, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, now we're, looks like we're ready for our name. We've got some reappropriations to do from the salary side, is that... Just so that everybody understands.
I can explain, I guess. So, the, these are reappropriations, they're all within general fund where our wages are paid from, that are in general fund, we have some in VHS two, but this is for the general fund wages. So, during the budget process, money was left in specific lines, and then during the wage increase discussion, it was added to certain lines, there was new lines added for new positions instead of being added to existing lines. So, for instance, we had a project manager, we had an additional project manager. I was intending it to be in the same line, well, they got it in two separate lines. So, then we've been paying people out of the lines as we submitted the salary ordinance. So, this is not additional request, this is moving the money to the lines we've been paying people from the entire year. Try to simplify if I can, but there's a lot of them, because it's combining the lines where we have less people in the individual lines within the budget, and positions would be, equal positions paid out of the same line.
And that tends to happen when we add a new line on the Form One. It doesn't, the, the new money gets in that line, they wanna pay it out of a different line, and it doesn't always get moved, so...
We had some interim position added, so then it became its own line, very two in another line. So, this is just combining those, so some of the lines, I think, might already be in the negative appropriation wise, but there is enough to make it all work for the end of the year, we just have to modify.
But it's all the same money?
Same money, it's just putting it to match the salary ordinance.
How would, how would be the best way, do you wanna do it each individually?
Probably, just so that it's understood on the minutes, yeah. So, I would just read exactly as they are on the agenda, if somebody would like to do that.
And then, just very...
Read it separate, but then approve all of them.
All of them at once, and then, for next year, just for the budget, these are already all grouped together, all right? I move that we reappropriate one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars from line six-nine, ending in line six-nine oh one, to line six-nine oh seven. I move that we reappropriate nine thousand six hundred dollars from line ending in six-nine one-two to line ending in six-nine oh seven. I move that we can reappropriate fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, ending in line six-nine oh five, to line six, ending in six, ending in line six-nine oh three. I move that we reappropriate forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two thousand eight cents, ending in line six-nine oh six, to line ending in six-nine oh three. I move that we reappropriate thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from line ending in six-nine one zero to line ending in six-nine oh three. I move that we reappropriate ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars from line ending in six-nine one one to line ending in six-nine oh three.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to move these monies from these different lines. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Uh, moving on to, for reappro, reappropriations, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think you can have this one, 'cause I, I think I printed it out.
On the, what we had, but you have copies of everything that we had filed with the auditor for this agenda, there's only one put on there of the overtime for executive administrator. And, I'm not, I'm not sure, we put in for four thousand, but it was taken down by a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents. And then the others were not included on this at all, and so...
The other two were not included, they were asked to be put, put to the October.
Right, we want this to be on the October.
Reason for it.
For discussion.
Yes, for discussion, I think that's...
Kenny hasn't had time to discuss it with anybody, so he wanted it on the October.
Nice to know that when it happens. But then, all right, then let's go back to the other one, why was it reduced by nine dollars and six cents?
That was the change that we made, it should be four thousand.
And... The better question is, is actually one of the force that you can explain that, if you would?
We'd be happy to. We get a lot of requests for, I'll use the wrong terms. When someone wants records of what's gone on, the filing cabinets in that closet is full of books that has to be searched. And I, I think, we talked about this, that, I'm gonna be prayer to this, is doing a wait with what I just did today, the copies, and do you? We need to say time, but those all need to be scanned in to the computer system. There's a huge amount, otherwise, you're spending all week doing that and not even getting the rest of the stuff that needs to be done in the office. So, we need to, but it's an overtime to do that, so that we can make life a lot simpler for the office in the future instead of having to go through each one of those books. And as an example, in, I believe it was, going back on records for paper ballot people, and it took Kaylee a long time to get that data for them, because of having to go through, back to all the minutes and go through all those different books, we got that all stored. And by scanning it into the system, it will take a lot of time.
See any idea what the cost would be on digitizing all that information, Donnie? Then whatsoever?
No, no, I, I, I mean, after we've scanned it in, and then?
No, I mean, with the whole process.
The whole process?
Yeah, what, what would the estimated cost be? No idea?
I, I, I have no clue on that. Okay, so that was an estimate of, of overtime that, that we need for her to leave all this stuff scanned in.
Okay.
Question, Kirsty, is, I know, like, the health department gives people to help them just on a part-time basis at a lot lower rate than overtime, is there any way that you could get somebody like that to help so that we're not paying overtime rates?
We can, we can even get a contract to come in to do it, but then, I don't think you can get that. I was talking about part-time people.
The concern...
We have no part-time people, and we do not have the facility to do it, we have no computers, we have three desks, and it is one hundred percent for those three.
When I transitioned the agency from paper operation to a digital operation, we tried to use students, and it wasn't effective. It just wasn't effective, they weren't putting the right information in the right place, and as a result, that, which they digitized was dysfunctional because we couldn't access the information. So, we just need to be careful, we qualified individuals, so we have a quality product at the end, that's, that's what we can use.
Because it, it's not just picking up that whole file or that whole folder and just letting it scan, and then you've got to separate each portion of that. It's back to do the search, then, then you get it like that, so...
My point was, I was just getting at, that overtime is about forty-five dollars an hour, roughly.
How much is it? Five-sixty an hour, she's doing time in and out.
So, that's, that's the only part that I was getting at.
Well, just trying to, we talked about this, is that you can look into a contractor of your, and I can hire one for that.
I have a metric computer and I can scan it.
Do you have staff that's able to help with this?
I have, I can hire a fifteen dollar an hour person to do it.
And that pays a little, Donnie?
All that stuff then would have to be carried over there.
Could we set up, could we set up a tech?
There's, there's four filing cabinets, there's a whole closet full of stuff. And the other thing is that we have to make sure, like Dan just said, is that everything is filed exactly the way it needs to be, and I'm not blaming someone.
No, okay.
If you had me do it, I'd goof it up.
Yeah, I would too.
Because, because you gotta make sure every section of that, every minutes, everything is done, put in a file.
No.
Otherwise, we need to search for that, just like we're doing now, you're searching through several books to find out.
I, I hear what you're saying, I, I think about it, if it's forty-five dollars an hour, if you're gonna pay, if you could pay up part-time or ten hours, I'm enjoying part-time or ten hours, I don't know.
Part-time's fifteen thirty-eight an hour, unless you limit this scanning to five hours a week. And then she's not doing time in and out.
You could roughly, you could roughly get three times the amount of work if you train someone to do it. Could you set them up in like, an office over here, maybe closer where the APC is or something? To help you do that? I mean, the, my, my biggest, my biggest concern in looking at it is that forty-five dollars an hour, it's an exuberant amount overall, and then, what is the, the impetus for like, the urgency for this? In, in the sense of, is there like this huge demand where like, if we don't get this done? I guess my example is like, is there, I know there is, and unless, maybe there is, is there like a court order that says we have to have all of this stuff scanned in by November first, or else, if that makes sense?
I, I agree with you. My assumption on this is that if someone requests that here on time period, I would guess, but I don't have that for sure. You'll have to ask legal counsel.
He's not legal counsel at this school.
Is this ju, sorry, is this just to have someone scan in this four filing cabinets, and then the job's essentially done? It's like we'd be hiring someone part-time for a week, maybe?
Or it'll take more than a week.
For a month.
Or a month, yeah, which I feel like is gonna be harder to find. Here's a part-time job for a month.
And, and I understand your thoughts, but we're already spending overtime doing this now, and sorting through all those...
So, that's why I think...
So, we're trying to make this a lot quicker, easier, and done the way that our office needs it to be done.
Right.
Because we're the ones that are gonna be looking that up all the time and, and going after that, so we want it done our way.
I just, and I just, yeah, and I just think that's probably what you probably would be, might need to do it on part-time with the holiday season coming up. You probably, I know we've had challenges there, people say they don't wanna work, you know, on a consistent basis, but you say, hey, we have a four-week, five-week, however long the project is, we have a six-week project that's gonna pay you X amount of dollars or until you get done, let's do it. But what about, I was asking, what about during the day? It's not something that you can do an hour or two of the day.
Our office is busy, one hundred percent, every day. This is added to that, so that's why we wanna get this scanned in, so that when someone comes in, then we can get it immediately for them, not, not spend. We're spending overtime to do this right now.
So, for the four thousand dollars that we're looking at right now, you digitize that as you were processing the information for a request, is that right, Donnie?
That's what we want, yeah. We want it all digitized right now.
Okay, okay, but was this to digitize?
This is a, this is an estimate on what it would take, the extra time it would take, all digitized.
So, you think the four thousand would get it done?
Yes. So, let's hope that things will go quick and easy, and it won't take that long. But it takes a lot of effort, because unless, unless you invite a, a really big scanner, we could do it a lot quicker, but it's ten sheets at a time, that's all we can do.
Well, here's my, here's my question to that. These documents, the county's not gonna stop bringing in, or it's not gonna stop producing documents filed. That's a, that's a bigger thing. Sean, at some point, you're gonna need something, I mean, we're gonna continue to do it work for these people. At some point, you're gonna need a scanner. Somebody else is gonna need something, because if you do that to forty-five dollars an hour, that's eight-eight hours of work.
So, first off, we, we already have a digitization system, it's called DOCWOR, the county's been using for fifteen years.
Okay.
Kaylee has access to it, and has, has stuff in it already, and has used it for quite some time, which I assume is what she's wanting to put this in as well. I might make, I guess, suggestions, maybe kinda happen meeting here. There's two sides to this project, okay? You have the digitization, where you're scanning the actual documents, and then you have the indexing, okay? Which is what Dan was talking about. Indexing of, of the documents, I agree completely, should be handled by someone that knows what they're looking at, and not just an intern or whatever. But the scanning of the documents, which is probably sixty percent of the effort, is just feed it through a scanner. There's nothing, there's not a lot of thought to it.
You don't need to put it in order, do you? I've never scanned a pass.
She's probably, I would assume Kaylee already has them in some kind of a folder or whatever, and you can scan it at a folder at a time or whatever. I, this is the first I'm hearing about all this, so I'm just kinda spitballing, so...
First time.
But, I'm sure we could probably work it through, if you wanted to do an intern temporarily for the end, the scanning part, and then have Kaylee and whoever work on the indexes, since they know the information, that would make, to me, more sense. Scanner-wise, we have high-speed scanners throughout the county, I don't remember specifically if Kaylee has one or not. The copiers do support high-speed scanning as well, and we have a, a couple spares that we keep on, on hand, of the desktop level scanners, just because we have so many of them county-wide, we want those out, we can replace it immediately because of how much they're used. So, if you wanted to borrow the laptop from the auditor's office and have a desktop scanner, we could facilitate that pretty rapidly.
But what is, thank you, this is helpful, what's the most comprehensive process?
The indexing part, without question.
Yeah, you've got to be able to retrieve it, Kay.
Yeah, and, and again, going back to Dan's comment, that is the, that, that's the key piece to this, because if you, if you, the information you put in, and when you're indexing, is what you're going to be searching by in the future. And so, if you do not put appropriate information in there, then the next person that has to go search for it isn't finding it, because it's garbage and garbage.
And the, the risk here is for like a FOIA request, of course, for example. When the public says, I want these documents, if we can't find them, one, it makes us look bad, two, legally, we're, we're in trouble, as Jewel shakes his head, so, okay.
Well, and it's getting all that in, so that we're ahead of the game, so now, that stuff comes in, we can scan that in a lot quicker.
So, when the FOIA request comes in, then someone who isn't as familiar with said data can easily find it versus having to have someone at a, an executive level find the doc.
Or for that matter, down the road, two, ten, fifteen years down the road, Kaylee's not here maybe, you know? And so, I will tell you too, that the Health Department did do a rather extensive digitization project from last year or... And it was way more than four thousand dollars, so, just keep that in mind, so...
I think it's important, I, I think, I think it's fair to say that most of us...
I think it's important, I think it's fair to say that most of us, excuse me, most of us here in the room have experienced a time where-
I went that way.
Thank you.
I would do it in my elbow.
Same applies to elbow.
That, that, most of us here in the room have put, and I'll just use photos as an example, where we put photos in, let's just say ten folders. And then I go and look for that folder. I know I put it in that folder right there, I know I did. And I'll echo what Sharon said, that with respect to the FOIA request, that when it's timed fifteen, twenty years from now, somebody comes in and wants something, maybe a month from now and you can't find it, we know it's in there amongst these hundreds of folders that are gonna be there. So I think it's important that whomever it is that you get to take care of this project, that they understand everything has to go exactly where it's expected to go so that in the future, that it can be found.
And in my, every, I'm not gonna say every office is the same, but every office probably goes through this, is that you've got a schedule every day and you've got phone calls, you've got people coming in. This time is after hours, but no one will catch you and you'd be really efficient in doing that. Do I want them working from four to eight at night? No, I do not. But if that's an hour or two each day, where they come in early, that they can get this thing care of instead of not getting things done during the day that have to be done every day? We gotta, we gotta look at that, how we spread that out.
Sure.
Can't, I cannot have them spend one hundred percent of the time for the next three weeks scanning all this stuff in.
Yeah.
I think we've got a lot of good information, you know, Sean, what Donnie's presented, so I don't know if, if we take a little more time to look into and see if there's any other avenues, but it's up to the councils, so.
I make a motion that we reappropriate four thousand dollars from line ending six eight one four to zero zero two three.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
The four thousand dollars, you think will do it?
Yeah, that's our estimate. Yes, we think that will do it.
Okay, but we need to kind of get a cap. We don't get to six or eight thousand.
Well, this will, all there will, I'm sorry, this will, all there will be in that line, so.
And it sounds like from what we learned with Sean's input, we can plan ahead for the future in terms of maybe the sixty-forty split and maybe we can revisit this in more of a process change on how we wanna, how we wanna do this department-wide. If the Health Department's done it, you guys are doing it.
They could commit under four thousand.
Yeah, we might have some learnings here, so.
Well, it's your chance.
Efficiencies.
Any further discussion? If not, all those favors, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll pose same sign?
Aye.
If you pass?
Thank you.
We got an additional request from a recorder.
Sorry.
Yes, I will. We'll do the recorder perpetuation. Madam Recorder, it's that.
Kayla, I'm here, we can record and we can copy water. Um, I just-
Extra sugar, please.
And I'm suggesting you have a coffee maker because that thing's so stinking up, but just apologize.
Do you have money, you're a perpetuation fund?
I, I, I lie in a first.
Is that in the twenty thousand?
I was about to say, is that in the perpetuation?
I'll just bring mine over. Thank you for hearing me this morning and this is not a true additional. This is simply moving money from the perpetuation fund to a line item for part-time salary. We have two part-time people that are working, they're doing back indexing and one works three days a week, the other one works two to three and then fill in if one of us are gone and they are really making some headway. We started out, I think they're earlier this year, we're like at nineteen eighty-nine, we're down to nineteen eighty-three. And that's information that goes online to DocSpop, so when people are looking up information there, the general public or any, anyone that wants to go on DocSpop, they can find that there and then we just keep adding to that and as we get it in our system and what they're doing is reviewing everything, making sure that the reaction is done for the social security numbers, making sure that the documents are clear and if they're not, we try to do whatever we can to, you know, make sure that that's as plain as possible. And so we're also in the process, just so you know, we're converting our books to hanging file folders and where we've got seven left for the plats and we've got to start on surveys. Then after that, our goal is to eventually probably go to digitizing our files, but right now, we had reached a point where we were completely maxed out. We had no other place to put a book. You know, those are the large eighteen by twenty-four books. And so we, as you know, I purchased this filing system through the perpetuation fund. So this money that we're using now and the money for part-time is coming from user fees, not from the general tax fund. And so it looks like a whole lot of money, a lot more than four thousand, but it's the, we're just moving it over there so we don't have to worry about moving in again. And again, it's going from the fund to a line item. It is not additional general tax dollars. It is the perpetuation money that, so Debbie can pay it out of that line.
Thank you. Your, your request is for your staff, they're going indexing, is that what you're saying?
It, it, that's what they're doing right now, but the one lady that I hired is learning the other parts of the office also. So that if somebody's gone, she eventually will be going up to the counter. I want to hire her full-time if I can convince her to do that because she's been just amazing at learning everything. She's retired from another job. She lives here in, you know, she's accessible here in Lebanon and so she's learned everything very quickly. I just haven't been able to convince her to go full-time yet, but the advantage is that we're also not paying any insurance or anything else on them and getting that work done. So she, right now, is helping with the indexing. She's now learned to scan everything in, like when we get a new recording for a plot or survey, she's doing that. We're teaching, getting ready to teach her the counter stuff so that she'll be up at the counter, helping customers, that type of thing. Her main, her main job right now though is, is going through and getting all of the old indexing, helping us get that completed. The more we get online, the more accessible it is through the DocSpop program and, and makes it just easier for searchers also.
Do you foresee needing more next year in your overtime line?
Um, well, if we-
This isn't overtime.
Yeah.
This is strictly clerical, this is for part-time and perpetuation.
Or, sorry, part-time, because I meant part-time.
Normally, for, and they index all the time, that's part of their process. They normally just have like a, a part-time student, somebody that came in for the summer, somebody that was on college break that would come in and help index.
I meant part-time.
They, yeah, and then they did also have a full-time that went to part-time mid-year. So she is working to fill vacations and stuff, so that type of thing.
And we did have two college students come in during Christmas last year to move all of ours. We've got everything upstairs organized, we've got the basement reorganized where you can go down there and find what you need. And we had them do that because we're to the point where this heavy stuff is physically impossible and our maintenance staff are overwhelmed. So we were able to hire, now they didn't get paid, you know, they didn't get paid, they paid, we paid the regular for them. But this, one person especially is somebody that could go full-time with us with no questions asked, but is staying part-time at this point in time. So honestly, the, in, in, we can also just pay that from the perpetuation and it doesn't have to be a process through here and it's not that I, I'm fine with you guys knowing everything that's going on, that's not an issue. But it does sound like a lot, but it's just like, there's no reason not to move it in there because that's where they're gonna get paid from. And they work three, one of them works three days a week, sometimes the other one works two or three days a week.
And I'm only asking about that to make, because I want to, I have a salary list that we need to go over at our budget hearing, so I just, that's something you were gonna need next year too. I just wanted to make sure we noted that.
We don't get anything from you on this at all.
For a part-time, okay.
Not for part-time.
Okay.
Now, part-time individuals are on a salary for you guys to approve, but the part-time people, I may agree with you, I would pay them for perpetuation.
Yeah, okay.
So that's not an issue that you guys have to worry about budgeting.
Okay.
But it does sound like it's better tracking, trackability if we just move the money over.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it is.
Well, we're actually just moving it from the cash balance. So we're just taking it and the only reason I ask come in front of the councils is because it's a salary line.
Okay.
So we're just moving it from her cash balance up into that line so that she can pay, because right now I can run the negative.
Do you have to do that sworn statement before we move, do you have to do that sworn statement before we do this?
Do I have to sworn statement?
Do we?
No, because we're not moving it to county general. It's staying in perpetuation.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to make sure we were aligned with that.
Like Debbie said, it's a procedural issue, but I wanted to ensure obviously and explain it to you. But it's not coming out of anything out of the general tax fund or the budget at all. The only thing that we, you have that you guys pay for our office are salaries, full-time, full-time salaries. Everything else comes out of my perpetuation fund. For supplies, office, anything that we do comes out of the perpetuation fund.
So the motion would need to, to state that we're moving, we're dedicating twenty thousand dollars from your perpetuation fund for the payroll of part-time clerical?
Yes, from the cash balance.
From the cash balance, okay, then so moved.
Good job, Dan.
Is there any further discussion? Jennifer, it's been properly moved and segmented. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign?
Thank you so much.
Something like that.
Yeah, he did that.
You'd think this guy ran his own company.
I could have sold cars, but I chose to turn it around.
Madam Senator, do you have a moment? A moment? I've got a question for you on the-
Oh, you don't get to go in there, Sarah.
Yeah, right here.
Didn't do it, I promise.
So we were talking about the trucks on the ARP and so when you got the quotes that you got, you were told that they were actually on the state? You got state listing or state?
I do. I went and got new quotes yesterday. One of them, I still need to kind of, they're gonna send me another one by around ten thirty this morning, so I haven't filled that. But I do have two quotes on both of those up to date.
But they are on state pricing?
They are, they are, yeah.
Government. Government discount.
That's what I was told, yes.
I just wanted to clarify, we did table it because we were told that you didn't have government pricing funding. So I just wanted that clarification for the council that you quoted government pricing, so.
According to what I was told on this, yes, I was told that it is government pricing.
What dollars do you have compared to what's in front of us?
The new dollars of where I went to, the new dollars on the F two fifty is fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents.
So that is less than what we had.
That one is.
Okay.
This other one is, the F one fifty is forty-eight thousand, nine hundred, seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. That's slightly a little bit more.
Yeah.
What was the other one?
The difference is, is both of those, when we were quoted in June, they were not quoting twenty-twenty-fives. The F two fif, or the F one fifty is a twenty-twenty-five, the F two fifty is twenty-twenty-four pricing because the twenty-twenty-five is not out yet. So as long as we order the twenty-twenty, the F two fifty, twenty-twenty-four, we can get that if we ordered it by the end of this week or signed and got it ordered.
So we have to sign by this week?
Was that?
So do we have to sign by this week?
If we are to go with the twenty-twenty-four. Otherwise, come next week, it's, you're not gonna be pricing any more twenty-twenty-four, so it's gonna have to be the twenty-twenty-five, just like F one fifty.
So can we just take a reset real quick and talk to Donnie in the hallway, like just confirm?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Actually, I don't know the commissioners, they've approved the vehicles.
Right.
We just need a firm number for you guys to approve the appropriation.
We need to go back to our numbers for the appropriation, yeah.
Yeah, the commissioners have already approved it for the project list for two vehicles. We just needed a firm number for the-
We tabled ours because Debbie, you wanted us to make sure our numbers are right.
Yes.
That's what we tabled it. So what are the numbers?
And we, and we tabled it because Commissioner Lawson actually said that we didn't have government pricing.
Which doesn't look like we did.
Is it tabled, can we resend that?
You can probably move to place that back on the agenda for consideration now because you do have the information. So if that passes to, back on the agenda, it's action on it, then you'll make a secondary action on that appropriation.
I think we should do that.
Did you want to, did you want to talk to Donnie?
Can I, this might be a silly question. I'm looking at the forward receipts. How do we know that the government discount is included? Because for discounts, it says NA. I just want to make sure that we're-
Oh, okay, so you had the original, is that what you're looking at? These are the newer ones and these are from Pearson for versus the-
And does it show the discount?
And it does have a Pearson, it says Pearson commercial discount is what it says.
Is that the government discount?
That's what I was told. I mean, I can verify it with him again, but that is what I was told.
Will Patrick give you the same place? So this is Patrick, what we have here are-
Yes, yes, yes. Those are just quotes, those quotes are no good, I mean, those were done in June, so they're not gonna be good anymore. And they don't, you can't order the two, twenty-twenty-four in the F one fifty.
I just wanted to make sure we have the correct amount.
Sure. What are the commissioners approving their, I mean, they just approved the item?
They just have to approve the item for the list. You have to approve the appropriation.
Can we, can we do, can we approve an amount and then come back and do, or should we get them done, what we did for some of the other projects? Do the negative reappropriation, like she can get them signed, if she gets them signed, if she gets them signed this week, we'll know what the amounts are and then in October, we can come back and do-
But if she signs them this week, those are the amounts, right?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
With the exception that the F two fifty, I am changing one little detail on it, so it should go down in cost. And I won't have that until he gets in at ten thirty, so.
So it's up to, up to the board, we do?
I would, I would say that if we, I would go back, put the items back on the agenda, approve the amounts, give plus or minus kind of like two thousand dollars just to give her enough wiggle room to, can you get it done this week?
Yeah, yeah.
Get it done and then whatever she- Is that a-
No, it would just be ordering them.
It's just ordering them.
You don't have the check, you don't pay for them until you-
Instead of, you do-
So it could be, usually it's what, two or three months before we actually-
Put some cushion.
I was about to say, put some cushion behind it and then we can do the negative reapprove.
Because if you don't have enough by December thirty-first, then you can only pay once, then I'll pay it.
Is there a motion to put it back on the agenda?
So I make a motion that we add the ARP appropriations back to our agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, publishing on ARP appropriation back on the agenda. Any further discussion?
It's two thousand dollars.
All those favors, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign? Thank you.
It's two thousand dollars a month.
Per vehicle or total?
Are we replacing two vehicles or one vehicle?
Two.
The others.
And one for APC.
Area plan and, and then they will actually be probably sold.
You're gonna get the money back no matter what.
Surface equipment?
Can you do two thousand dollars per vehicle, you'll get it back.
Okay.
I think one of that good sheriff's vehicle.
I'm moving.
Okay.
I say one of these pickups would be good sheriff's vehicle.
To appropriate fifty thousand, nine seventy-three for the area plan truck and fifty-three, five one eight for their surveyor truck, which includes a two thousand dollar buffer for each vehicle that we should be able to recoup at the end. And would you confirming that that includes the government discount?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those favors, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna move on to Circuit Court for additional requests for office supplies.
The judge is not available, so her bailiff said that they have no money left in office supplies due to their increase in caseloads and the prices that have gone up. And that's why they're requesting the additional.
Is there, I mean, it's a-
I will say, so, two summers ago, well, and she does have that increased caseload because Superior One is no longer receiving level sixes. They only go to Superior Two and Circuit now, so they're both seeing an increase in their caseload with all like those, the physical files and everything that would go with that increase in those, so.
Is there any further discussion on the council members? Do we have a motion?
So, so moved.
Second. Second.
It's been properly moved to second, is there any discussion?
I would just say, next time we do this, get at least a heads up, it didn't, it just.
I believe the judge forgot.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The council meeting was today, I got a text message.
It happened, yeah.
She tried to remind her.
It's been properly moved to second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those favorers, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. That's all we have on our agenda, so do, do we actually, what's that? Is there any public comment? Do we, do we have a motion adjourned and then we will start the council meeting and, or dispatch a workshop in about ten minutes.
So moved, second.
Tell us how you're looking for it, Jennifer!
All those favorers, seeing by saying aye?
Aye.